We're going to, uh... We're gonna go right into our agenda for tonight's meeting. And when we get down to visitors, I'm gonna let Tim go first because he has a fire department meeting to attend to as well. And, uh... But we'll go with our first item on the agenda, the approval of the rec- minutes of last meeting, February the 4th.
So move.
We got a... And second, who, all in favor? All vote in favor?
Aye.
Next is approval, ratification of bills. Kelly?
Sixty-nine thousand dollars, let's pay 'em.
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
Okay, we're moving right on. Jody Nutt may be here a little bit later. He had something to do before he came in. And Mike Carroll, uh... He's here from Lexington with Brenn Center and Carroll. But still, I'm gonna let Tim take up our time you have in your folder. And Tim's talked to us before, dual-purpose drying cabinet. And how his department needs that. Tim, you wanna say something before the council?
Yeah. I'd just like to get permission, maybe purchase this. I think it's in your packets. Maybe you've had a chance to look over it.
Yes.
It's sixty-three hundred dollars. It'll dry or turn out gear in two hours versus two days. Last couple of weeks, we've had three structure fires. We've had twelve sets of gear that was wet. You can't use it when it's wet. So this was actually get it back in service a whole lot quicker.
You talked to us, uh... Last month about this, and seemed like it's a good purchase, yeah.
I make a motion. I've already... We've gone over it two or three times with him back here at the meeting, and then out to Firehouse. And of course, you was on the Fire Department, Billy's on the Fire Department, I've been on the Fire Department. And, uh... Brian back there is on the Fire Department. He Bates been on there, knows that these guys need their equipment tip-top shape. And so, uh... I make a motion that we accept the bid.
Any other to talk about it? Or do I hear a second?
Uh, second.
All in favor? We're all voting in favor of that, Tim. Is there anything else you need to bring before the city council?
That's it.
We appreciate the good job you do, and we want to support you. Marvin, did you want... Uh... With the visitors, uh... Larry, did you wanna address the council? Okay. I didn't know whether he's just visiting or not. Marvin, did you wanna come before the council?
Yes, sir. I don't want nobody sideswiped by this. Okay. October 2nd, I went to the doctor up in Louisville. I left about ten forty-five. When I must return home, I found that my eight-week-old master puppy and my mother's three poodles, two geriatric dogs and a three-year-old were missing.
That blue thing is Marvin.
Anyways, I found that the dogs were gone. Went looking everywhere. My sister proceeded. She was the first one to call Ms., um... Williams about whether or not if the dogs might have gotten loose, been down around, and then been picked up and brought in down there. I proceeded that day and the next day and a couple to look for my dogs, go down, talk. I visited Harden County, Breckenridge County, Ohio Butler, Warren, everywhere looking for my dogs. None of the animal shelters, nobody knew anything. For all I knew, my dogs had been taken and sold for drugs or, you know, maybe pet dogs, knew nothing. Searching for my dogs for three and a half months. My last conversation with Ms. Williams was the day that she officially come back from her maternity leave, and I asked her if they had heard anything. She said, "No, Marvin, we haven't. But as soon as we hear anything or anything like that, we will call you and let you know." Four days later, it comes to my attention that my master puppy, which y'all have all the copies of this, had been adopted by one of the worker's parents. She had been shipped and everything. Of course, there is no chips. I've had her checked by three different vets, including two in Bowling Green. There is no chip in her. But here you can see where we... The animal shelter. And here's her shot records and everything. We were not given any notification to rectify anything that they thought was wrong. There was no... I've also got in there where I went to the county attorneys and to dispatch and had it all checked. They never filed anything that they notified us. They never come to us or had any search, um... seizure warrants from the county attorney. My mother's three dogs were shipped out of state the next day. There's also from what has been put on Facebook by Ms. Victoria Kerr explaining this, and I'll read this to you in just a second, that, um... Her parents didn't know until they found out that what had actually happened through some other people, they contacted me. Now, I was told by speeding them, "How can I prove that this dog that they brought me back is the same puppy that come up missing? A week and a half after her disappearance, I purchased her brother, therefore DNA can be done." Now, um... Mr. Langdon here can tell you, he was told that my pup was picked up at City Park, right? It's what you told me in front of them, in front of you, in here.
Mayor, I'm not sure we really need to comment on this.
Okay, wait just a second. Okay, you don't have to comment. You don't have to comment. You can listen. The pictures taken by the animal shelter that was put on with my puppy was in a kennel crate with two bucks, okay? Therefore, she couldn't open herself unless she was, um... Cired by Houdini. Um... She was put outside that day while I was gone, so she wouldn't be chewing on furniture. I was gone for four and a half hours. Um... The picture, that if everybody has seen it, if you glance at it, it looks bad. I was told that they... Everybody was told that she was laying in her feces, covered in dried feces. Um... If you look at the picture closely, there's food and water there. She tipped it. The feces that they say she was laying on is a ripped-up dog bed from Walmart. The feces she's coated in and, um... Everything, that would be her brindle coloring that matches the color of the bedding. Of course, you seen the bedding. I showed y'all the bedding the day that we were supposed to have the meeting.
Marvin?
No, I'm... I'm just gonna have... Now, this is what I want you to hear. Victoria Kerr, who was an employee there. "I worked at the shelter at the time the dogs were stolen off his property. The poodles were sent out of state, and the master puppy was sent to my parents' house, who had no clue what happened. A worker wore a dark hoodie and went with an off-duty officer and took the dogs. The dogs were then hid at the shelter and later removed, the workers, myself included. Housed the dogs overnight until they could be taken to an out-of-state rescue. Marvin made a lost report, the dogs were stolen, and made it look as if they weren't." I'll let y'all read the rest of it. That's basically through that.
Marvin?
Now, the pictures of the poodles where they were being bathed. Of course, the black one has a skin allergy, which Dr. Snodgrass had us, um... He... She was on Benadryl, had to have it every day. Um... The little Maltese poo, she had never had pups. The white one, which supposedly somebody, Victoria told me, that they were... Said that they were so overbred that their uteruses were falling out. Um... I can't... I have proof from Dr. Snodgrass that they had been fixed over six years ago. So that couldn't be true. Um... And if they felt that my dogs were in dire need of rescue without going through proper channels, why did they not take my pot-bellied pig, who was in a pen less than a foot away from my dogs, and come back for the two masters and the pug that were in the house? And why was I not notified that they had 'em?
Marvin, please.
These offices... These offices are... Should be held to a higher accountability of the law because they enforce these laws.
We have spoke probably seven or eight times.
You said there's nothing that can be done. Sir, our poodles can. If they adopted these dogs, I'd send them across the state line. There is paperwork proving where they are. Interstate trafficking, if y'all can't go get 'em, the FBI can. That is one thing that they can go through. And I have an appointment in the morning at ten o'clock at the Louisville Bureau office. I'm just wanting y'all to know, so y'all aren't taking sideways like you were with, um... WHS whoever.
Let me ask you a question.
Okay? And I also have video with Ms. Williams admitting to everything and chipping my dogs. And there's a lot more than what was seen by WHS. You have a copy of that, speeding them? I'm sure y'all watched it.
Have they been a lawsuit or anything filed?
No, so there is... We don't want money, we want our dogs back. We want our dogs back. We don't want money. There is nothing we want.
No, I just wanted to know if they've been anything.
No, sir. There has been nothing on the lawsuit. There has been no lawyers talked to as of yet, until we find out whether or not we can get our dogs back.
I'm a little confused. They've been gone three months?
And I... I did not know. I thought they were stolen. We thought they were stolen by somebody just out randomly. I come into my... October... No. October 2nd, they were taken. January 14th, my dog was returned to me with her adoption papers.
How did you get the dog back?
The people who adopted her, their daughters that worked at the animal shelter, brought my dog back to me.
I heard you said they weren't shipped, but they're now shipped?
Okay. Right here, it says that the puppy was chipped. These are the numbers. Now, I've had her checked by...
Where did this come from?
Ms. Williams.
This paper here?
Yes. I have had her checked by Dr. Ray. I have her checked by Dr. Snodgrass. There is no chip in her. And if you watch the video that they have on the desktop side, it talks about how... Okay, Steve Jones asked them, "Well, we need the syringe and the chip because Tori told us that she hadn't been chipped." And Ms. Williams, in that part of the video that they have, "Oh, no, she's been shipped, it's right here on the papers." He goes, "Well, they were in Washington DC at the time they were called to see if they would foster her and then adopt her." They go, "Well, did she not come from Marvin's house straight to our house?" Jessica's response was, "No, she... We brought her here first so we could worm her, give her her, um... Shots, and we could chip her to make sure, ensure that Marvin was not able to steal her back." Of course, that is on that in her own words.
Here, Marvin, keep these with you.
Oh, y'all have copies of all these? These are my... That's the one with the numbers on it. And also, I talked to Pete and some others. They're wondering if the animals were in such dire need of rescue, why did they not take the pot-bellied pig too at the time?
Jessica, you wanna say anything?
I've been told not to comment.
I said, uh... I've talked to Marvin and his mother both. I know Marvin six or eight times. And it's a never-ending circle in that I have no resolution to make you happy. And I wish that...
So how many dogs are still gone?
I wished I could...
Three poodles are still gone. Two. It's... It's like this. I was told by the mayor that they are not his problem. There it is. He is their boss, which means he takes care of their... If they can't be done in the off-duty officer, it is your job as the boss of the police department.
We have looked at ordinance to try to keep this...
It's a chain of command.
Keep this... Keep this from happening again.
The ordinances are not wrong. Everything... I believe in the animal shelter, I believe in ASPCA. Their ordinances and their policies are not wrong. It is the ones taking it into their own hands and not following the policies that are the problem. If they had followed their own policies, we wouldn't be going through this right now. I would have been notified, I'd have my day in court to prove about my dogs. My dogs sleep in the house twenty-five years around here. Nobody has ever seen my dogs running loose unless they were unleashed. Um... Oh, yeah, across the road to play with the kids. How many cops, sheriffs, fire departments and everything have I found dogs for, helped them find homes for? And everybody has seen my dogs around here, never malnourished. My dogs live to be old. Two years ago, when I got sick, we took and brought our dogs. A dog I had eleven years, and her mother, his mother for fourteen, another one for seven. Her father for fifteen. I asked them to find a home because I could not take care of them at that time, being sick. They did. That did not give nobody a right to come in a year and a half later and take my dogs off their property without notice.
Marvin, I've apologized to you on behalf of the city.
I understand, and I accept your apology, but I want my dogs back.
I truly...
They can be...
Sorry, this is happening.
If they were... If they were sent out and they were adopted the way they should have been, or the way they're supposed to with policy, there's a paper trail to where my dogs are. I don't care if it messes with the animal shelter and the rescues they send them to, and they broke ties.
If there is a...
They were stolen.
If there is an animal, if there's a paper trail that we can find those dogs...
If there's not a paper trail, then they're not doing their job properly. They have not done their job if there is not a paper trail.
We're being this thing to death right now. I listened to you complain for about ten minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
And you keep going over the same thing, the same thing. You're looking for a solution? We don't have any solution. We don't have a solution right now.
I just don't have it. If I could resolve this, I would.
Bailey, Casey, Mary Ellen, the solution is they return to our house.
I would suggest you say you're meeting the FBI tomorrow.
Yeah.
Go talk to them, see what they say, and then come back to us if you have...
Yes, sir.
Thanks for... Thank you, Marvin.
Because I know with the investigation and everything, was done in-house.
Thank you, Marvin.
Thank you.
Ma'am? She hang up? It's warming... It's warming out. Mike Carroll is visiting with us from Brenn Center and Carroll. And he has, uh... He's gonna talk to us a few minutes about the Rite Aid building. He's gonna talk to us about a standalone municipal building. Then he's gonna also talk to us a few minutes about site selection. And, uh... Mike, uh... Billy Dallas is in... Well, you... You probably met Billy enough fast. Uh? Blake Miller's a new council member.
How do you do, sir?
Mike, we appreciate you coming down at this late hour, and, uh...
It's not late yet.
It will be by the time you get home.
And I apologize to the, uh... People sitting behind me. But I do have a, uh... I do have a eleven-by-seventeen I can give you, so you... This is... This is... This is what you're looking at on the other side of the board. And I'll give, uh... The council...
Thank you, Marvin.
So, there's a copy of the... So what... What, uh... What the mayor and I have talked about was the fact of looking... Looking at the, uh... Reviewing... This is the plan of the Rite Aid building, which we had presented to council back in December. And, uh... The budget was a little higher than everybody thought it was going to be. And I think we... I think we caused some problems that day with what... With what the numbers were. But we've been working on it ever since. But basically, this plan... You can see this is the rounded corner of the Rite Aid building. This is... This is, uh... The main street out here. And of course, the parking line goes all the way around it. But essentially, the building is divided into two parts. The... The blue part is... Blue-gray part is the police department right here at the back. The city hall is the gold part in front. And you can see by the numbers, there's about seventy-five-hundred square feet of space allocated to city hall, and about eighty-two-hundred square feet to the, uh... Police department. But I need to point out that what... This appendage at the back is a new piece of the building that, uh... That provides the fitness area and the Sallyport. This little curve that you can probably see a little bit of in your plan is the drive... With the... The drive-up or the... That little canopy that's on the back of the building. Originally, I think the intent was we could make that into a Sallyport. But in reality, you see what's... How big the Sallyport is. It's just not big enough to do. But there is structure in there that we can use to build on to it and add it out this way and add that... That here. There's a stairway back here that leads, provides access for the electrical department to get upstairs because all the electrical equipment is up on a mezzanine located above this section of the building here. And we anticipated that we would use this back area here for evidence. And there's a little... There's a small... I don't know if everybody's been in the building. There's a small elevator back there which goes up to that mezzanine. And the rest of the mezzanine would be used for evidence storage as well. So there's evidence storage up there, which isn't included in that square footage. But this is essentially the plan, uh... From the city hall. We had a front entrance coming in here. We had a public meeting room or council room over here. Office is down this corridor, and office is down this corridor. Central restroom is in here. This was laid out so that this public room could be utilized at night when... Or used throughout... Well, at any time. And the public would have access to the restrooms in this count... Into this room, and you wouldn't have access to the rest of the building. And the police department itself is separated in the same way as the fact that there's an entrance to the lobby back here. There is a door that would be connected physically, but that door would be locked at all times and only certain people, I'm assuming, would have the access to go back and forth between those two buildings. So that is essentially the... The plan that we came up with back... Back in December when we were looking at trying to move both departments into there. Now, what... What... Mayor Embry and I has asked me to do is to look at a freestanding police department plan. And, uh... That's what this is right here. This is... That's what you're looking at right there. Yeah, you did get the other plan, I didn't... That one again, sorry, guys. But this... This is a set... This is an eighty-one-hundred-square-foot plan of a freestanding police station. And I've given it to Brian to look at beforehand, and I said, "Brian, don't judge it because, you know, if you decide to go this route, there will be adjustments that need to... To happen." But you can see, it's basically, uh... You get... We have an entrance at the front of the building, uh... With a lobby and a report room. Got record space, got the patrol office here. We have records over here where anybody coming in needing a record would get in here. The public would get to this... This far and not get beyond that point without being allowed into the rest of the building. We've got, uh... We've got... We've got the locker rooms over here. We've got the evidence room back here. The Sallyport is at the back of the building. And you would come in here and then go directly into the evidence area. Evidence processing. We've got some storage spaces. We have the fitness room at the back corner of the building. And essentially, then have all of the... All of the administrative offices clustered in one location right here. This is... This works out a little bit better in this plan because of the fact we can... We have a free... An empty pallet so that all the offices can be here. And everybody gets a window. We've got the interview rooms in here, and then the patrol areas in the center of the building, which is probably the most used portion of the building. And then we've got a small break area right there. So essentially, it's the same program as what we were looking at in the other building. It's just a freestanding building as opposed to being part of the... Part of the Rite Aid building. And if you're looking at that... What we've prepared here was a site plan which shows the building at the center, public... Public access here, parking in front of the building, police parking only on the back and the sides of the building, and having enough room here to... To expand. You know... We're talking about expansion, and you're talking about doing something. But we need to look at this down the road. And that's... This is something I've become aware of probably very late in my career, is that probably forty percent of the buildings that we've replaced could have been renovated or added on to if they weren't landlocked. So I advise you not to buy a property that's just this big if you could go this route. But we're looking at probably wanting about two acres in size so that you have adequate space to build this and have expansions for this somewhere down the road. None of you will be on council when that happens, by the way. But... But some... So somewhere, we need to plan for that... That kind of situation.
What time frame are you talking about?
Time frame? You're probably looking at... Under either scenario, you're probably looking at fifteen months, fifteen to sixteen months from beginning to end, from start of design through construction to get into the facility.
If you've got a rough idea of a cost for this building?
I do.
I've got a copy of that.
This is, uh... What you're seeing... What you're seeing here is the breakdown of... Of the building and the various components of jet... Of building construction, fire protection, and site cost. And we've... You can see the site cost. You know, we've put, you know, some... The landscaping, utilities, and parking. We've... We've put those numbers in here. The parking is probably a firm number. You know, we're assuming that utilities are gonna be varied. But it's about a two-million-dollar project to do this building on its own. That's what we're looking at.
What you construct, uh... Breaks in the water or...
Yeah, I... I... Yeah, this... I would... This should... This should be... Well, the code requires this building to be... What the code requires now is an essential building. So it has to be built to a higher standard than... We couldn't go out and build this building out of wood framing and, you know, metal siding, or wood siding, or aluminum siding, or anything like that. It needs to be a masonry building. This is... This building would essentially serve as a storm shelter as well.
Is there any other questions about this... This building?
No kind of basement in.
I don't have a basement planned in this thing, but, you know... You know, I... I will caution you. Everybody thinks basements are free. They're not.
No.
You got... You got a, you know, a basement... A basement... You know, this... You got, you got a, you know, a basement, a basement, you know, this, this, this building, this building, the way we've got it is about two hundred and fifty dollars a square foot for everything and, and I say square foot, that includes all the site work and parking, so it's not just building. But the basement could be built for probably about half that, you know, assuming you don't go in and finish it out. So if you wanted to put a basement into it, you could certainly do that. Now, let me caution you again. My, my, I don't mean to be the bad guy here, but if you put a basement in it, you're going to use it, you gotta put an elevator in it. You put an elevator in it and then you gotta put two means of egress to get out of it. So you're investing a lot of additional money into getting, unless you, if you put a full basement in it, you could justify it and if you put a partial basement in it, say half the building, you're going to get four thousand square feet of space, you're going to get twelve hundred square feet of stairways to get out of it plus an elevator.
So what's the, the first building, Rite Aid building? What's the square footage cost of all of that? You said you had two fifty on this one?
Yeah.
Can you use the same square footage value?
No, because it's an existing building. We had, the square, the square footage on that building was more like, was closer to like a hundred and fifty dollars a square foot because we were, we have the existing building in place. But I think that-
So it's less expensive square footage than what this would be?
It's less expensive, it's less expensive per square foot because you've already got the building, I'm sure, yeah.
And we own the building now?
Right.
We've still got the choir location cost and this if we decided to do something like that?
Yes, sir.
And what would that acquisition cost be? We don't know.
Yeah, I, yeah. Yeah, Kelly, the only advice I want to give you on square, don't buy, don't buy too little land, just make sure, you know, if you go that way, just allow it to-
On the original plan, did y'all do any more figuring to, to cut the cost sum on that original plan?
We did. We, we, we took a look at how we could, how we could cut some original costs out and we could probably cut a couple hundred thousand dollars out of that cost from what we had looked at originally. That was, that was what we were thinking we could do.
Like what would you be cutting?
Oh, well, some of, some of the items in, some of the items in it, this is a preliminary estimate, you know, we don't have anything to base, base the judgment on. You know, we, in, in this, in this original, in this original estimate that we prepared for this, we were looking at replacing of the entire HVAC system. You know, maybe we don't have to do all of it, but we're certainly going to do some of it because it's going to be a different type of use. So it is going to require more HVAC equipment than what's in here. It's a couple of things like that is what we're looking at. Same way with the electrical. We've got, you know, we've got fifteen dollars a square foot in here and for this one, we've got twenty dollars a square foot for the electrical cost in this one.
But it might be twenty five or it might be fifteen.
Yeah, it should, it should, it should be in the range. I mean, but yeah, it's, at this point, it's a preliminary estimate.
So the piece of property that you're looking at here, have we done any site as far as sewerage and hooking onto sewerage? We'll have to do some things. The city might have to have a bigger sewer to hook to it. We haven't looked at anything like that.
No, we have, we, we haven't, we haven't done anything in regard to that, Kelly. You know, I, I've got, like I said, I've got, I've got fifty thousand dollars in here for utilities. So I, you know, I did, I did put money in there for that, that, for connection, you know, things like that, you know. It may be as simple as running it, you know, you might get lucky and just run, run it, you know, you only have forty or fifty feet to run it to connect to a sewer line. You know, we don't know that.
But the Rite Aid's already connected to the sewer?
Rite Aid's already connected, correct.
Talk about site-based selection, Mike.
You mean for the, for, for this thing?
Yes.
Yeah, you know, I, you know, if, it would be, from my perspective, it would be a highly visible site. We want everybody to know where the police station is. We don't want to hide it behind something. We want it out, we want it out in the open. We'd want access to it like, like this plan shows. Ideally, there'd be a public entryway and there'd be, there'd be a police entryway so that the paths don't cross so that when people have to exit this building in a hurry, they don't have to worry about running over other people coming into the front parking lot. Ideally, that's something that, that's something that we were working with on the Rite Aid building of making sure we could do the same thing down there. That's, you got a lot of pavement down there, but you don't have a very good, well-organized parking plan, particularly on the backside of it.
But you'd offer servers that we could advertise in the paper looking for a, a specific amount of acreage location and they would grade that location according to utility services, expansion possibilities and a number of criteria.
Right. I'm, I'm sorry, Mayor, I didn't, I didn't understand what you meant because we had talked about that. We've done this before for, for some state projects where we just, as the mayor said, you just put an ad in the paper and you say, we need two acres of land, here's what we're looking for and let people come in and, and make an offer to you.
Here's what I've got.
Here's what I've got.
Yeah.
And then what we'll have is we'll develop a matrix and rank them by size, by cost. We'll ask them for a cost. By size, by cost, proximity to utilities, proximity to the amount of site work that has to get done. You know, we don't want sites like that. That's not going to grade as high as a flat site, you know, things like that. So, you know, we, we would do that for you as, as part of the ranking system if you wanted to go that route.
Getting back to the, the Rite Aid building, you gave us a two point nine million, whatever. You said you could probably cut a couple hundred thousand out of that if you had to.
Yes, sir.
So these preliminaries that you've had before, this one come in at two million, the other ones that you've done have what percentage where you offer or not on the total?
You mean on, 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 on other stuff that we've done? We're, we're pretty, we're pretty close. I mean, that's one, that's one thing we do.
Ten percent?
Oh, definitely within ten percent. Now, I'm not going to tell you, we don't blow that estimate once every three years. Something will happen. I mean, I don't know where this, I don't know where the detention center project currently stands, but that was one, a recent example of one that came in.
Might correct me if I'm wrong, but somewhere in our discussions whether it was back in there, we asked for a, what you thought a renovation cost would be and two point two million was discussed and then when you came back, it was two point nine million. Do you remember those conversations?
Yeah, right.
So you missed it seven hundred thousand?
Well, we, we, that two point nine included some, had a contingency fund in it. So I mean, it did, it, it had other things in it other than just construction.
And we had a contingency in this one?
No, sir, that's just, that's just two million dollars.
And, and that's your, contingency is your fee, right?
Yes, yeah.
What was it on the Rite Aid building?
Uh, it was two point, yeah, two point, two, two hundred and forty thousand was what it was. Because we use, we use ten percent. We use ten percent.
Okay. And this has nothing to do with city hall renovation or anything?
No, sir.
Mayor, I don't think I've got any questions.
Billy, you got any questions?
I do not, Mayor.
Tootie?
Let me get this clear here, you got ten percent going in on top of this?
Well, if you put a ten percent contingency, yeah, I mean, that's what we did from, from a preliminary standpoint. We don't have it on this, this one right now. But, yeah, there would be additional costs that go along with that.
Clayton, did you have any other questions, Mr. Carroll?
No.
Brian, did you? Anybody else? I think that we're done.
Okay, all right.
Thank you. Thank you very much.
I will leave these boards here for you if you, if you, if you want to look at them again.
Okay. Said, we appreciate you coming down on short notice and we, you've done awful good work for us and we appreciate you in light of this way.
I'll, I'll pass that on to her.
Thank you.
She, she has, she has to drive to Akron tomorrow, so I gave her the night off.
Oh, my goodness.
She'll have to come down here. This is yours.
Let's move on with our agenda and Jody Nutts just came in and is dying to speak to the city council. So Jody, look at this blue line right here that Bob lined out for you, you're on TV.
Well, sounds good.
Yeah.
Let's see, let me pass this out real quick. I'll pass it out to everybody and guess everybody who's recording, is that correct?
Yes. Jody's on the baseball committee.
He's our director.
Director, yeah.
If you didn't like to do this, I've been congested for about a week or so, so I'll try to get through this pretty good.
Chase, help him carry those out.
There's about a dozen back.
He's loaded. Mike, thank you.
Anybody else need one?
All right, yes. Like I said, I'm the baseball director for Lynchfield. And what I'm, what I'm proposing here is a, it's for a travel ball league. This is aside from our local recreational baseball. This is just a, we do our recreational baseball on, during the spring months from April to June, normally Monday, Tuesday, Thursdays and Fridays. This here will be just a strictly a travel ball league from other surrounding areas that form a travel ball team consisting of like ten or twelve kids and the coaches will form their own teams. So we don't pick or anything like that. If anybody familiar with how travel ball works, they pick up their own ten, twelve kids and then they go and play on the weekends. We're offering something during the week because a lot of travel ball teams, they will come in and play a weekend tournament. They'll be from like two or three kids from surrounding areas. They're not normally based on, from the same location, okay? So this is actually good for practice for some of these players. They don't practice much during the week because they're from different areas and whatnot. They're not, say, from Lynchfield. Some of them will be from surrounding areas. So bear with me if you have any questions and I'll try to be clear and prompt. I just kind of talked about the idea. Each team will, like I said, will have, we're going to try to have four age groups, eight U, ten U, eleven U and twelve U, okay? And because we're doing it one night a week, not several nights a week, we're only going to be limited as far as the time allotted for that particular day, okay? So I think if you look through here and I think what we're going to try to do is Wednesday nights, utilizing four fields, okay? So eight U will be on one particular field, ten, eleven and twelve, so we'll utilize all four fields. We're going to try to, we can only take up to six teams per age group because of limited time for just one night a week. So what we're going to do is have a fifty-five to sixty-minute allotted timeframe and this is where communication will be key with the coaches going forward. It's a little bit different scenario because of time, but we're going to do a fifty-five to sixty-minute time limit per game. Now, what I would like to do, once that, once that fifty-five or sixty-minute time lot goes out, doesn't matter if you're in the top of the fifth or bottom of the fifth, two outs, whatever, when that buzzer goes off, that's the end of the game. I don't like doing that, but because of the limited of one night a week, sixteen, you know, so we have to do it that way. But anyways, so that's what I'm offering. It'll be a two-part season. One part first will be April through June and then we'll take a break at some point. It'll be a ten-week program, ten weeks, and then we'll take about a month off and go from August to October. Now, the important part is of it, well, it's, it's all important, but if you turn the page, this is, people ask me, why do I do what I do? Of course, money always is a important part of life, but also you've got to enjoy what you do. If you don't get enjoyment out of it, you're not going to, you're not going to win. And, but this here is a project, a projected budget of, it's money that's sitting out there that we're not, that we can utilize that's just in the closet, extra money. So I'm going to run through this real quick. The registration fee is, will be five hundred and fifty dollars per team. If ten kids, twelve kids per team, that's fifty dollars a kid. It's not bad, okay? I think we're offering forty-five, forty dollars for rec league, fifty-five dollars for this, it'd be pretty good. Gate admission, two dollars. So each team, if you take five hundred and fifty dollars times four leagues, six teams per league, I've done the math here, that's thirteen thousand, two hundred dollars. Gate fee is two dollars times twenty-four teams times ten kids per team, that's two hundred and forty kids coming through the gate. They've got two parents. At the end of the first season, that's nine thousand, six hundred dollars. It's all projected income.
So you're charging your players to get in?
Uh, parents, because you, you kind of figure that probably two parents are going to come in per player.
Two dollars times twenty-four teams and ten players, two hundred and forty players, so you're not charging the players when they come through the gate?
Charging the parents.
Just the parents?
Just the parents, okay. Is that understandable?
That's not the way you had it on the-
Okay.
Grandparents?
Two hundred and forty, two hundred, two hundred and forty players times two parents per game would be nine hundred and sixty dollars per game. So the parents coming in, you charge the parents two dollars. You've got to figure that, so are we on the page, same page now? Got you.
What's the gate fee above that says two dollars times twenty-four teams?
That's, that's the mission to get in.
Just for everybody, not, non-players.
Right.
No players, okay, I got you.
All right. And concession stand, you got, so assuming that two hundred and forty players, so that's parents coming in, assuming that each parent is going to buy something at the concession stand, probably five dollars. That's kind of a low miss. Five dollars a family, that's projected of twelve hundred dollars per game. So if you add all that up times ten games in one season, that could be thirty-four, or thirty-four thousand, eight hundred dollars. It's just kind of what's sitting there. That's the opportunity of, if we do it two times, I think that's just shy of seventy thousand.
Wouldn't that be high if, because you're going to have to pay for your inventory for your concession stand, right?
Well, that, that is just money coming, coming in. Yes, there's going to be some expenditures as far as umpires, labor, concession stand goods and stuff like that, but that's just money that's kind of coming in. So yes, there is going to be some expenditures upon that as well. But it's just something that I wanted to kind of talk about and bring forth, see if you guys thought, you know, what you thought about it, if it'd be a good idea to, to look at maybe doing. I don't think we've ever had anything like that here in, in Grayson County. It is, it has been around some in Louisville area, some bigger cities and stuff, but as, as far as the people actually coming to play, they will come. You know, teams from like Ohio County and from E-Town and various areas, we're not just targeting just kids from this county. We want kids from this county playing and participating, absolutely. But we have enough growth outside that they will come and play as well. So, but I'd like to get some input, see if you guys think it'd be a good idea. I'm willing to give it a shot if you guys are.
I mean, boys.
Well, we'd have six games or, or four games going, or four fields going, three games a night, so that would be seven umpires. You would have two on each field and the machine pitch field would only need one. So that's, be seven umpires, probably three, I'm going to say roughly three concession stand workers, probably a gatekeeper, so that would be-
And who's going to do the cleanup on the field on Wednesday night whenever it's all over?
Well, the gatekeeper wants, the gatekeeper, what we do now is during this, during the season, regular season, the gatekeeper, once people start flowing in, that gatekeeper then starts picking up trash and stuff like that and doing all the maintenance work. And of course, I will be there as well, so, and-
Then I'm there the next morning too.
Yeah.
If there was trash and they-
Because you'll be getting ready for Thursday night.
Yeah.
Right, but I, I'll, I'll still be at the field regardless if there was, if there was issues.
And as far as the maintain, the maintenance of the fields, he would be prepping it Wednesday anyways because he works during Wednesday afternoon, so the, the field prep and, and all that stuff would be taken care of as well.
So how many local teams do you think would participate in this, lower maybe?
Uh, across the board?
Yeah.
I think there's, there is a ten U, eleven U and twelve U. I'm not sure if there's an eight U local team or not. There, I know that, I know of one off the top of my head that lives in the neighboring county, so, but I'm not for certain if there's a Grayson County eight U team or not, but I know that there is a ten U, eleven U and twelve U Grayson County team.
Otherwise, the fields are empty on Wednesday.
Yes, I mean, it's just utilizing, utilizing the fields, basically.
Insurance, I'm a little concerned about that.
Okay, now, I have talked about that with, there, there is a, there's an organization that hosts, that hosts tournaments. I called and talked to them about that, about the sanctioning. Now, each team, each team has to be insured, so they will, there's a company out there that they get their own insurance. So the insurance part is taken care of from, from the team itself. Now, the sanctioning, I talked to a tournament holder that hosts tournaments and we were talking about the sanctioning fees and whatnot. He said, you know, he said that, yes, they are, they are insured, but you can't just have little Johnny put up a tournament for a weekend and them be covered. I said, exactly, I understand. And he said, BPA, for example, they host tournaments. He said, we, we could sanction you guys under BPA and then have tournaments and you, you guys can be sanctioned under us and be fine. He said, but the problem with that would be they pay little umpires a little bit more, there's like a thirty-five dollar umpire fee, is that, that's what they normally do. And plus, he said, we could charge you twenty-five dollars per team to be sanctioned under us. Well, we're currently with our rec league sanctioned through Cal Ripken. I talked to the district commissioner and also the regional commissioner as well and asked them about the sanctioning. He said, you guys are already currently sanctioned? He said, no trouble, no, no problem at all. So I've kind of talked about that with them and they said that they would be totally, totally legal to do that and-
Two questions.
Okay.
Our local players, will they have to pay the registration fee also five hundred and fifty dollars?
The teams, yes. As a team, the team would have to pay five hun, now, if you go, if you go and play like a weekend tournament, generally speaking, that tournament is about three to four hundred dollars a weekend to play and that's guaranteed three games. So the Saturdays, they, they play two games, then, then pool play starts on Sunday and it's win or go home. So generally, you're paying, you're paying three hundred dollars for a weekend tournament and you could potentially only be playing three games for three to four hundred dollars, depending on what-
The other question is, Cal Ripken insurance would cover our players?
Yes.
And that's okay.
Yes.
Could we get maybe a confirming letter to that effect from them?
I could, I could work on that.
Yeah, and each team that comes play, we probably need a insurance, not a waiver, but a liability statement that we do have now.
Yes.
Daniel, who, who are you all sanctioning by now?
We are going, we are going through U triple S, same as we have the last two years.
Your insurance through them for your kids?
Yes.
You want, take care of them if you ask?
I don't think the, the insurance for the U trip is not going to take care of Cal Ripken, if that's what you mean.
Well, if he wasn't Cal Ripken, do you have to be Cal Ripken?
Yeah. Yeah. But do you only?
No. I mean, he is in the family.
So, what you're asking is, like, this Wednesday night league?
Right.
Can they use the U-Trip?
Yeah.
Insurance?
Okay, I got it.
I see what you're asking, neither of you?
Possibly. Yeah. Because actually, yeah, I think you probably could, yes.
Our baseball has to be Cal Ripken this year and next year, is that correct?
Well, I mean, anytime you want to pull out, you can pull out. Uh, we've already signed, I, I guess we're, we're prepared and, and we voted.
They've thought about it in the past changing, I know. When I was on here before, they, they discussed the different...
I think we, we decided to stay with Cal Ripken, uh, as for now anyhow.
But next year, there's going to be some boundaries and stuff that come into play?
My understanding, next season, and I haven't seen this in writing. I've just heard hearsay, and I've, I've heard from the district commissioner as well, that next year, there will be boundary lines. It was at last year, it was two-year contract, two-year agreement that we can play outside of boundaries after next season, or after this season, starting next season, will be, uh, boundaries. Yep.
Most of the...
Are most of the leagues in different counties Cal Ripken?
Most of them in, in Warren County, Bowling Green are Little League. Uh, Ohio County is Little League, Butler County is Cal Ripken, Breckenridge County is Cal Ripken, and Evanston County is, I believe, Cal Ripken as well.
Warren County is Cal Ripken as well.
Last I knew they were. Uh, it's, it's kind of, and when you get into like the Louisville area, it's actually mixed with Cal Ripken and, and Little League as well. So, yep.
Billy, you got any other questions of him?
Has nothing to do with y'all's thoughts?
No.
Still going to have All-Star League teams at the end?
Yep. This is just an, this is just an extra, uh, uh, extra little thing that we could do that generate a little bit of money, but also...
Do we still provide for All-Star teams a tournament or two? The city takes care of that uniform?
They have, man.
Clayton, you have any questions?
No.
Uh, Jody came to my office and I talked to him about it, and I knew very little bit about it. And, uh, he offered to do this for no, no fee, but I told him if this was a, uh, we're not down here for free, and we'd pay him at the regular rate that he'd been accustomed to getting. And like I said, this is not a long-term contract. If we do that this year, it doesn't work out, we don't have to do it again. It's just as simple as that. So let's put that in the form of a motion, then.
So move.
Kelly made a motion?
Second.
Second. All in favor?
It's going to cost us some money.
Yeah, we do, we do want to make sure that the insurance issue is resolved. And I, to me, that's the only question that...
And I take my hat off to you because the more recreation we provide, the more...
Little park school.
That's what I'm saying, into, into ball field, pay nothing.
Some of them may play this and not play in your primary league.
Everybody donates their time on the softball, baseball field committees. Uh, we appreciate the work you do.
You have a lot of parents that may not be able to be there through the week, they can be there on Wednesday.
Yeah.
We've actually had someone from Louisville contact me wanting to know if we ever have any tournaments to give them a call, they'd like to participate.
Yeah.
Can be good.
I think it's very valuable with the money coming in. We don't understand exactly how much money travel ball brings into the community, but everyone's going to benefit from it, much more than the numbers will even say on this end.
Business is all through town.
Exactly.
That's right.
It's going to benefit a lot more than what the paperwork would be.
Well, it's a tourism thing.
Yeah, that's true. That's where money comes from.
Even if it's a break-even situation, where tourism, we're paying out tons of money to get people to come here, we're not paying them to come here, they're paying to come here. So, even if, uh, we appreciate it, we appreciate it, Jody.
Okay.
Thank you for...
All right, thank you guys. Thanks for your time.
Thank you very much. Uh, let's move on. Second and final reading of amended inducement ordinance. Did you want to say something, Clay?
No.
I thought I should have heard you. Uh, second and final reading of amended inducement ordinance for Skyline Industries. Ready?
Yes, sir.
An ordinance amending an ordinance, uh, 2018-25 granting OFS Brands Incorporated inducement to promote employment. Whereas is the economic interest of the city of Litchfield and citizens at OFS Brands Incorporated locates newly expanded facility in the city, so it's provide additional employment opportunities within the city. And whereas is desirable to amend the ordinance relating to the granting of OFS Brands Incorporated inducement to promote, uh, employees to increase the number of new employment opportunities. And therefore, be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that the ordinance entitled granting OFS Brands Incorporated inducement to promote employment be amended as follows, with deleted portions being interlined with the line and added portions being underlined. As incentive to induce the location of newly expanded industrial facility and the prompt creation of new employment opportunities for up to 103 persons, the city of Litchfield will provide the following inducement to it. The city of Litchfield will pay to OFS Brands Incorporated for a period of 60 months from the beginning of its new facility, the sum of $1,000 for each of the first 103 full-time permanent employees who work for 90 days from the date of hire, which employees are in excess of the number of current employees hired by OFS Brands Incorporated. Said city expenditures expected to be recouped within five years from the proceeds of the unabated net profits license and payroll license fee. Payment of such inducements shall be made at the end of each quarter upon presentation of evidence reflecting the number of new hires.
Do you want to hear a motion?
So move.
So move, second. Second, Tootie Contra, all in favor? I went out to, uh...
Mayor, you have to do a roll call vote on this.
Oh, that's right, we mentioned that earlier. Uh, Clayton, how do you vote on this?
Yea.
Yea.
Yea?
Yea.
All vote, yea? So it carries. I went out to OFS Brands Friday morning, not knowing what to expect. Some of these manufacturing facilities are pretty guarded about letting you in the building. But Mark O'Neill, he's a local guy, and, uh, I walked through the plant, I already began to assemble the line that, uh, this 103 people's going to take. And, uh, I told him we just tickled a death with it. The day before, Brenda Simpson and I went to Leggins Plant and walked through the plant, about an hour and a half. And, uh, they have quite an operation. And if you go to work out there, you'll earn every penny they pay you. Because it's fast, it's dirty work, but now, uh, they make these mechanisms. And you'd think you'd make enough in 24 hours to satisfy the whole nation, but... And recliners and fold-out beds, it's really, Leggins Plant's a big operation. And I say Skyline Industries is, is a big one. Okay, uh, let's move on to this, uh, second reading of this one.
Ready, Mayor?
Yes, sir.
An ordinance amending an ordinance relating to and regulating mobile food vendors. Whereas the city of Litchfield has a duty to take responsible steps, protect the health, safety, welfare, and orderly conduct of vehicular traffic from the city. And whereas regulation of mobile food vendors is desirable to accomplish those objectives. And whereas is desirable to clarify the intent and operation of original ordinance, and therefore be ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that the ordinance entitled regulating mobile food vendors be amended as follows, with added portion being underlined. Section three originally stated a permit shall be required for each vehicle operated by a mobile food vendor, which permits shall be valid for one year, subject to section five thereof. Section three is amended to read, a permit shall be required for each vehicle operated by a mobile food vendor, which permits shall be valid for one calendar year, subject to section five thereof.
Do I, uh, Clayton, how would you vote on this?
Yea.
Yea? Kelly?
Yea.
Yea.
Billy?
Yea.
All vote in favor, yea? And, uh, the motion carries. And we'll move on to our, uh, also a second and final reading of amended ordinance relating to the imposition and administration of occupational license requirement and payment... You're going to read that anyway, you go ahead.
I am, your honor.
I don't want to knock you out of your draw. Sorry.
Oh, oh, have this that hard. Y'all may want to get your coffee for this one because this is going to be... An ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the imposition and administration of an occupational license requirement and payment of occupational license tax by persons and business entities conducting businesses, occupations, professions in the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. Whereas the city of Litchfield, Kentucky is a municipal corporation of the home rule class with statutory power to impose license fees on trades, occupations, professions, and may provide for the collection of such fees pursuant to KRS 67.750 to KRS 67.795. And whereas the city of Litchfield, Kentucky has previously adopted an ordinance imposing such fee, and whereas is necessary to amend the said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and any provisions being deleted indicated by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets and closing them. And therefore be it ordained by the city council of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, that the ordinance relating to the imposition, administration of occupational license requirement and payment of occupational license tax by persons and business entities conducting business, occupations, and professions in the city of Litchfield, Kentucky be amended as follows. Section one, item 15, originally stated tax district means any, uh, means any city of the first to fifth class county, urban county, charter county, consolidated local government, school district, special taxing district, or any other statutorily created entity with the authority to levy net profits, grocery receipts, or occupational license tax. Section one, item 15, is amended to read, the tax district means any city of the home rule class county, urban county, charter county, consolidated local government, school district, special taxing district, or any other statutorily created entity with the authority to levy net profits, grocery receipts, or occupational license tax. Section three, item 2D, is being added and reads, vendors who only participate in festivals or, or fairs sponsored by nonprofit organizations, where said events do not exceed five days. Section three, item 2E, is being added and reads, all rental income of any type or source is fully taxable for all forms of ownership, except for an individual or single-member LLC who owns two or less residential renting housing units, they are exempt from the requirements of this ordinance. A housing unit defines a single living quarter, duplex equals two apartment units equal one, with ownership of three or more residential rental units inside the C limits. Individual or single-member LLC is presumed to be a operating business and is subject to this ordinance, and all net profits are fully taxable. Section three, item three, originally stated, if not employed by another, the minimum sum of $50 shall be paid in advance as a license fee. It says something to be created against any additional license fee due under the provisions of this ordinance, said minimum fee to be paid no later than April 15th of each year. Section three, item three, is being amended to read, if not employed by another, the minimum sum of $50 shall be paid in the advance as a license fee. It said something to be created against any additional license fee due under the provisions of this ordinance, said minimum fee to be paid no later than January 31st of each year and submitted along with the business license application. Section four is being added to read, minimum and maximum liability pursuant to KRS 67.773, a minimum tax of $50 is assessed on all net profits per year and is due annually with the business license application. The minimum tax may be taken as a credit against any additional taxes due when the net profits for the corresponding year are filed. The credit shall not reduce to amount due below $0.
Danny, on that first page, uh, it had, it also had first to fifth class. Don't you want to strike that and make that home rule class like you did the paragraph right beneath it?
It is on mine. It must not be on yours.
No, you read it.
That's how, that's how, that's how it reads now.
That's how I would read it now. That's how it's read now.
Okay. Oh, I see, I see, I see, I see. Okay, uh, Clayton, before amending this, did the read like, didn't he just read? Kelly?
Yes.
Billy?
Yeah.
All, all in favor, pass. And I said, we also learned in Orangeboro that there's no abstaining. That if you, if you sit here and don't vote or say you're abstaining, it goes with the majority. Said the, the best thing to do, if you're not for something, you don't want to vote or don't want to be recorded, that voting for the majority or not is leave the room during the vote. Uh, get up and, and literally leave the room. Okay, uh, first reading of the amended ordinance relating to the ownership and maintenance of dogs and cats. That's also in your package.
We need a discussion on this, Mayor, this is a...
Well, have, uh, is this our second reading of this?
No, sir, this is just the first.
This is the first reading. Uh, I tell you what, we'll have two weeks before proceeding with it. If you see some errors or something you want to change or unsure about, uh, draw a question up beside it, and we'll talk to Danny and Jessica, and, uh... And I say, we won't, it wouldn't pass anyway until the next reading of it. So we'll have a full two weeks to decipher this and ask any questions about it. We're trying to, uh, modernize some of our, uh, ordinances that's, that's managed, that's going on with protection of animals and their owners.
In part two, Mayor, I think the KRS had eliminated one section of it that we no longer need. And this is kind of a house cleaning issue on some of, to clarify. It said, uh, maintaining animals a minimum of 10 days. It didn't say the maximum, just to kind of clarify exactly.
And there's a reason, there's a reason for that. Uh, Mayor Thompson suggested that we keep it, make a minimum 10 days for any animal brought into the animal shelter. But if we'd done that, Jessica said, the number of animals that's claimed after the fifth day goes to 1 percent. The sixth day less than 1 percent, seventh day less than that. So, uh, to put a requirement that she keep every dog 10 days, she'd have to double the size of the animal shelter. And it, it'd be very difficult to do. And I said, have you got any other questions about this ordinance or anything related to animal shelter? We can discuss it in the next two weeks and come up, uh, some resolution about it.
I think the original ordinance issue was it didn't set the maximum time. It just said the, kind of the minimum time, or it said the maximum, not the minimum. And we need to specify that they must be held at least five days.
At least five days.
In the KRS, so that was part of the reason. Okay. An ordinance amending an ordinance relating to the ownership and maintenance of dogs and cats from the city of Litchfield, Kentucky. Whereas the city council of the city of Litchfield, Kentucky, determined that property and health of citizen, citizens of the city of Litchfield require that the ownership and maintenance of animals within the city be subject to reasonable regulations. And whereas the city has a power to impose such reasonable regulations. And whereas is necessary to amend said ordinance with provisions being added indicated by a solid line beneath them and any provisions being deleted by a line drawn through them and encompassed by brackets and closing them. And therefore be it ordained by the city of Litchfield, Kentucky as follows. Section one, as used in the ordinance of following terms have the following meaning. Animal means dog or cat. Animal shelter means a facility designated or recognized by the city of Litchfield for the purpose of impounding and caring for animals. A lar, large means a dog or cat which is off the property owner and not under restraint. Cat means any domestic feline, six months of age or older. Dog means any domestic canine, six months of age or older. Licensing authority means the city of Litchfield. Owner means every person having a right of property in a dog or cat. And every person who keeps or harbors the dog or cat or has it in his care or permits it to be, to remain owner about premises owner occupied by him. Restraint means the dog or cat is within the reasonable property limits of its owner or secured by leash or lead or is otherwise under the direct control of its owner. Section two, it shall be unlawful to allow any dog or cat, whether or not licensed by any appropriate authority, run at large. It shall be conclusive proof that the animal is allowed to run at large if it is found on a public way or on the real property of one, not the owner, without being restrained. It shall be unlawful to harbor or keep any animal which disrupts a piece of loud noise at any time of the day or night. Uh, section four, any person who sustained loss or damage to personal property by reason of an animal unlawfully running at large shall be permitted to recover damages in civil accident as provided by law. Section five, it shall be unlawful to treat any animal in a cruel or inhumane manner, including but not limited to failing to provide adequate heat, shade, bedding, ventilation, shelter, or food and water consistent with normal requirements and feeding habits of the animal's size, species, and breed. A dog may be restrained by a chain or tether, provided that the chain or tether is of reasonable length and weight to the animal's size and breed. Any dog or cat or other animal species found running at large may be impounded by the city of Litchfield in an animal shelter and confined therein. In the case, animals whose owners can readily be identified, notice shall be given by appropriate means that the animal has been impounded. Impounded animals shall be retained at the animal shelter for a minimum of five days, pending the claim thereof by their proper owners. In the event that such detained strays are not so claimed, the animal may be either placed for adoption, sent to an approved rescue organization, or be euthanized at discretion of the city. In the event is determined that such strays are diseased or suffering or otherwise unsuitable for maintenance, the said strays may be euthanized without being detained for any such reasonable period of time. Section six, any animal impounded may be redeemed by the owner thereof or his agent prior to the animal's adoption or destruction upon presentation of all licensing requirements and proof of vaccination requirements herein after said fourth, and upon the payment of the impounded and reclamation fee is determined by the licensing authority, plus $5 for each day the animal was boarded by the city, which fee shall be in nature reimbursement for actual expenses incurred by the city and shall not be in lieu of any fine, penalty, or license fee herein after provided for. Section seven, adoption fee of $85 for dogs and $50 for cats. Cats shall be assessed at the time of adoption, which fee shall be in the nature of reimbursement of actual expense incurred by the city. No dog or cat shall be released for adoptions of pet without being properly vaccinated as required by KRS 258 of the Kentucky Drive Statute. And license, which charges are in addition to... are in addition to the adoption fee herein imposed. It shall be unlawful for any person, section, I'm sorry, section eight, it shall be unlawful for any person to interfere with, hinder, or molest any agent of the City of Litchfield in performance of his function herein permitted in order to accomplish the purpose of this ordinance. Section ten, all ordinance which are, you know, are in conflict with this ordinance as hereby repealed to the extent of such conflict. If any part of this ordinance shall be held invalid, such parts shall be deemed severable and the invalidity thereof shall not affect the remaining parts of this ordinance. Section eleven, any person who violates any prescription of this requirement, ordinance shall be guilty of a violation.
You, Kelly?
The last sentence in section five, the next to last paragraph.
That's exactly.
It says the animal, if it's not placed for adoption or sent to an approved rescue organization, it could be euthanized just simply because it was not adoptable. And in the next sentence, it says the said strays that are determined to be diseased or suffering can be euthanized. So to me that, are we going to euthanize, they not adopted?
No, I think that refers to animals that are diseased or in, or having in distress some way in the last section.
That's what the last sentence says.
Which is deemed unadoptable if they are, if they're diseased and they're going to cause the rest of the shelter to pick up that disease and they're not treatable, or if they're vicious enough that they're going to put us in danger, that deems them not adoptable. We will still keep our no kill status if those are the only ones that are euthanized. Very rarely does that happen.
I think that'll be struck out. I think that ought to be struck out of the next to the last.
Need to be placed for adoption, sent to an approved rescue organization at discretion of the city because the next sentence covers what Jessica just said, it's in terms of strays or diseased or suffering, otherwise unsuitable.
Right.
I, I agree with Clayton on that.
It, it just opens the door, it just opens the door for, uh, if the dog's not sick or whatever. It, it provides down there in the ordinance that if it is sick or something comes up that it can be euthanized, but up here, just because, not saying you do it.
No, yeah, I get what you're saying.
But just because, if you want to euthanize it because it hadn't been adopted, bang, and I don't think that's right.
Right, that's against our shelter policy anyway. We don't, we wouldn't euthanize something that's not adopted.
That's one, one of the options, there's adoption or sent to a free rescue are euthanized, and it's got to be one of those options, and if you take that out of the sentence, that's not an option.
No, it drops, it drops on down there and says, explains why it would be euthanized.
I think, I think what it's referring to, the, it's, you have to keep the dogs for five days. The only exception to the five day requirement is if the dog is a, is a vicious animal or if it's diseased, then, then you don't have to retain it five days. Otherwise, and then under this, it's, it's the five days, you have to keep all dogs five days, and then after five days, you have the option of either, if it's not adopted, to send it out to the rescue or euthanize it.
I still read that same, we can euthanize it.
I, I do too, and I, I don't go along with that.
Wonder if we change that, sent to an approved rescue organization at discretion of the city, comma, then euthanized.
I would just hang along with that.
Well, that'd be better, wouldn't it?
Strike, or be euthanized.
Yes, and then.
In that particular paragraph.
Yeah.
We will never euthanize for space.
Oh, I know you won't, but we're all not going to be around forever. I mean, in ten years down the road, we may get much different.
Sure, you just want to eliminate or be euthanized.
Or be euthanized, and then put at discretion of the city, then comma, euthanized.
Yeah.
It's the same, it's the same, it's the same thing said differently.
Sure.
Yeah. Well, with that, with that exception, uh, do you see any other issues, Clayton?
No, I don't. Mm-mm. I already got it.
By the time we read it the second time, we'll correct that wording on that. Uh, you want to vote yes then on this?
Yea.
I got a couple questions.
Yes, sir.
Where, where it says, Jessica, where it says chain, tether, reasonable length, I understand, weight to the animal's size and breed, is there a chart for that, or is it just a common sense thing?
It's a common sense thing, and nobody's going to be patrolling the streets looking for that. We're too full, we're not going to just ride around looking for dogs on chains.
I understand.
Uh, it's just if we get a call out and that animal is on, if you've got a chihuahua on a huge log chain, and it's in distress, we'll be able to say something about that.
They're, they're working it out.
Right.
Section seven, eighty-five dollars a dog, fifty dollars a cat. Sometimes, and I don't know if it was the Litchfield or Twin Lakes, you'd have like a twenty-five dollar Friday day or, uh.
What we do there is if I get super full on cats, or say Valentine's Day was coming up, I'll call Twin Lakes Humane Society and ask them if they want to sponsor. So by sponsoring, they're paying half of the adoption fee, or the adopter only has to pay half. That way we can number cats down to twenty-five dollars, or our dogs to forty-two, fifty.
I see.
Yeah, that happens a lot.
You want to vote yea?
Yea.
Billy?
Yea, with the changes that you.
Yes, sir. All in vote, vote in favor of that, and we'll read that next meeting. Uh, we have a vacancy coming up on the Intelligence Commission that we end February twenty-eighth. It's also a four-year appointment. I want to suggest to the council that reappoint, we reappoint Bob Crawford. Do I hear motion on that?
Just scoundrel.
Yeah, he ought to get unanimous support then.
Yea.
Sac my tutti, all in favor?
He wants it.
Yeah. I hope he doesn't.
Have you asked?
I'm assuming maybe. Softball mid-season, mid-summer session, season.
Okay.
Hoosier.
That would be me.
Danny?
Okay, our softball had met with the high school coach last week, and the high school coach is pretty excited about us, you know, instilling fast pitch into our program. He realizes that this will not be a feeder program to his, his program, but, um, he wanted to know if we would do a mid-season for, uh, fast pitch and co-ed, probably like in July and August and tournaments possibly the first of September. Um, it would go as a regular season, we'd have gate fee concessions and paid umpires, and then we'd have to have our director in, in place also to, to, uh, instill the games and set out all the schedules up. Um, the coach also said that he'd like to have this done because then his players can also play after season, so they can continue to get play, and we can also open this up countywide because there is nobody else doing fast pitch in the summer also. So this is something that our softball program would like to, see if you guys would approve for us to go ahead and push forward with that.
Were you getting your help with teaching and rules and?
Exactly. Well, my intentions, the, the coach said that he will help us. We have not had the high school coach, we've never had that support before, never, because what's slow pitch, the fast pitch, kind of dibbied up, we've never had the support of the high school coach. We had a wonderful meeting with him, and he has vowed to, um, help us work together to give the kids the best opportunity to succeed, and that's what we're here for. We want to, we want to allow them to have an opportunity to learn, and with, it won't just be him, there will also be, our other coaches are going to help, we have talked to them, they're going to help, but I think it'll be very beneficial. Um, also, uh, kind of back to what you was asking with us being UTRIP, we intend on advertising that out of the county as well, because with UTRIP, U triple S A, once they sign up for that, our insurance covers everyone, there is no district, there is no boundaries. So I'm hoping to also get some out of the county people in as well. So that is, uh, going to be a big benefit to it. We also have, um, co-ed that we have been doing spring every year with our co-ed. We have, um, we, we typically had five to six teams, something along that ballpark, uh, with us adding fast pitch and looking to have our numbers more, we're hoping to also move the co-ed to that time.
Cold inside with each other?
Yes, and they would be on opposite nights. I feel very comfortable in saying, I've spoken to several co-ed players and coaches that are outside of Grayson County, and they tell me, basically, they have a spring season where a lot of teams don't play because they have children that are playing baseball and softball. A lot of them do not play the spring co-ed. A lot of them play fall co-ed in E-Town and in Bowling Green. So if we do it in that timeframe, July and August, then we expect to have more people coming into Litchfield.
Really, we have a spring, late?
Right.
Really? I, I mean, we've always, that's what we've always had. Still have fast pitch through, through the spring?
Yes.
Still going to offer team?
Yes, sir. Yeah, and, and what that does is get more people into our ballpark that wouldn't be here in the spring.
Well, you might have some girls, I understand, that play in the, in the spring that want to play fast pitch in the summer.
Right.
That want to, you know, that's.
Just like she said.
Because you have some slow pitch, you have no slow pitch through the summer, right? Your summer league?
Right, right.
So it'll be strictly fast pitch.
Exactly.
You may have some that want to try.
Exactly.
It gives the high school girls the opportunity to come out and play too.
You give them opportunity to keep going.
Right, but, but it will be co-ed as well as fast pitch, and, and I feel better doing co-ed at a different time than our spring sports, because it's, it's a little bit, it's a little bit of a culture clash when you've got all these people, you know, you're, everyone is dedicated to the youth, and they're wanting to see these youth grow and learn, but then you also have a very competitive co-ed season, and I feel more comfortable if we kind of offset it to where the co-ed will be in the summer and it'll be on its own night away from the fast pitch.
Any other comment? Did you see any problems? Do you want to vote for approval or just give consent?
I, I, I'll make a motion.
I second.
All in favor?
Thank you very much.
Tammy, is anything else you want to mention?
Yeah, um, I talked to Wes about this, Dewitt Park, our park's about ready to open up, and Dewitt is, I think, is a safety hazard, that main road going right there, kids darkened out in the road, I've been looking at it for a while, I think we should put a fence up there.
Agreed.
I thought about the vinyl fence, but they're really ridiculously priced, and I think it's just an attraction for kids to climb on.
You know, the black fence looks good.
Or even the green, like a green fence.
These are going by, we want to be able to see through that fence, these kids is on the playground.
Well, I mean, the, the black wire fence, like at the ballpark.
Yeah.
No.
Chain link fence.
Chain link, black.
You're talking about a wall to extend it on down to the street.
Yeah, it's two hundred and five feet. We, we want to, we can take from the railroad tracks and go straight across in front of that playground over to the transfer station, it's two hundred and five.
Transfer station.
Yeah, to the transfer station, to the, so no kid can run out there, they have to go around the fence. Wes and I had discussed it, and he thought it was a great idea, they'd be willing to put it in for us, so you just have to, it's going to cost us probably.
It costs part of the way down now, doesn't it? It doesn't come down any.
No, no.
Okay.
So it costs us roughly a thousand to fifteen hundred dollars to purchase the material to do that.
Just one kid's life or.
You need a motion?
Yes, sir.
Make a motion, give Tammy authority to defy that.
Thank you very much, I appreciate it.
Who seconded that? Billy? Thank you, Tammy, you got anything else?
I'm good, thank you.
I want to thank you all for, uh, your, your support for the park center program.
How is the playground, Tammy?
Well, our mega tower to be going in here in the next couple of weeks, we have to wait for the ground at Dewitt to thaw out and dry up before it can put that paper down, otherwise it creates more issues. So once that's completed, we're ready to rock and roll.
We're getting close.
We're getting close.
Our agenda calls for our executive session, it'll be a short one.
Excuse me, you actually have to state the KRS before you, before we go.
Okay, executive session, KRS sixty-one point eight one oh, possible pending litigation.
One C.
One C.
We had had it looked through a little less.
I wasn't saying anything.
I went to law school one time. I'm about to hit my tutti, hate it a bit.
Rebecca, how you doing? We're not going to be here long, I promise. Man, how you doing?
Good.
Don't talk to me during counseling.
Oh, what, yeah.
I'm sorry.
That's all right.
All night, I'm excited. Basically, we're talking about, you know, and, 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 and,
How about my smoke?
Did I have a second? All in favor? We're back in session and our attorney is going to make a statement. Just we're at during executive session, we discussed pending, possible pending litigation and no action was taken by the city council. We're going to move on now to the rest of our agenda and wrap it up here in a few minutes. Unfinished businesses, unfinished business, dilapidated properties. Did you have something to say about that?
That was just, again, your honor, it was, uh...
Your honor.
Good.
That's what Joyce called me.
That's what happens after thirty years of court. But I give you guys, um, city council, kind of a procedure that we wanted to go by on dealing with... We're going to tackle a nuisance issue first, uh, because we figured that's going to come up with spring with the yards and stuff like that, uh, before the buildings and also with the buildings, we may have to have some, uh, funding involved in that. I guess my question to the council is, were you all okay with the procedure that we came up with on how to deal with the nuisance?
The one that was typed up and everything?
The one that was typed up by David?
Yeah, okay.
In my handwriting, but at David's request.
Yeah.
Okay. The other issue on that was, does the council want to give final approval to any abatement that we do? We put in there that, you know, the council would decide if we're going to go out and do it, mow the grass or whatever needs to be done. Did you all want to... I think in the past, you all kind of, uh, David explained.
Did they already? Wes, did they already if we go, did we send them in? Is that different?
No, it's just that if the council wants to give us the okay to do it, that was the issue.
Except for far away from the city council, we're going to give them authority to act along.
Or would you all, do they have the authority to make the final determination to have, you know, yes, I give you all authority for Wes to go out there and trim?
Basically, you're saying if there was a piece of property David and Dean need to be mowed, if they brought here in front of the council to decide whether or not we should go take care of it?
Or give them the authority.
That's what we're doing now. You know, David would provide pictures of whatever we're going to do. We would have proof of what the property looks like.
I think they operate more efficiently than let you all do it.
Yeah.
For every two weeks and it kind of independence us away from the...
If you wait two weeks, the grass will be too high.
Yeah.
You have an ordinance on how high it can be right now.
Right.
Before you have to catch it.
Are you want a motion or two?
No, I don't think we need a motion. Just consent. Just consent if that's okay, we'll just proceed with the way, because it's not part of the ordinance, so we don't really have to...
At some point, we do need to be informed of what's going on in case the property owner asks us about it. We have mowed this property on Sunset Drive or whatever.
Instead of getting approval that way, then we can just, each time something's done, we can provide the before and after.
Some information.
On each incident that comes up.
In case the homeowner recalls us or something, I think we need to be aware.
Wes, can we use inmates to offset some of the cost that's going to be accumulated?
We possibly can.
Inmates. Inmates. To maybe offset.
Because those are pretty busy right now. I know your mowing crews are pretty busy just with the people you have here.
Yeah.
So I didn't know.
And we possibly could. I mean, of course, they use three inmates, I think, now, or at least two for the summer with the mowing crew and that's our weeding crew.
And then like can you utilize...
I think the issue with using inmates or weeding, we'd have to get with the, you know, Jason Williams on this would be a big problem for property. Inmates being... I don't know, I don't know that that's a fact, that that's something we would have to get with him on.
I bet you're right on that.
I think, of course. Make sure it's great. So we're giving Wes authority to find people?
No, no, no.
No.
What we do now is we...
David Riley's the one deciding the people that's got the problems.
And once we come in and do it, then we figure out the cost of manpower, equipment out, whatever we put on it, and we actually have a total for a bill that would normally put a lien on the property, I think, or something like that.
Don't you have fees already for that?
Yes, we just figured by hourly fee or whatever the employee is working or...
We're giving him the authority to do it without consulting us or whatever.
And once David contacted, you know, we could work it out and say, okay, we'll take care of it, because David would be basically the one that decided, yes, it needs to or no, it don't and...
And he'll talk to the homeowner as well.
I was going to say, if you notice during the procedure, we've set out, we'll have at least one face-to-face contact with each owner and at least two written notifications that if you don't do it, then this is what could happen. So they'll have at least three notifications to correct the problem before Wes is...
They just cut out that extra two more weeks on top of it going down.
We've had trouble in the past with property that were owned by out-of-town people, organizations, things like that, and we've had trouble with them before. And so I don't know about face-to-face with them.
That's true, and that's good if it's...
I've got a question, because that brings up, uh, the guy across the street has been given chance after chance after chance to bring his garbage up. He was told last week to bring his garbage up for tomorrow. They're not even making an effort to bring the garbage up at all. They just won't do it, they've defied everything, and they will not do it. It's owned by his mother. His sister wants to buy the property from her and she won't sell it. Bank of Clarkson has got the lien on it. If she would sell it to her, she's going to kick him out, but she won't do it. So, you know, what are we going to... I don't know of any of y'all in here that live across from something like that. I know Brian knows exactly, one of you been there?
I've been there.
I know where you're talking about.
Marty, Marty Higdon.
Can we go with the, what's on the books now?
Public nuisance folks like you ever give us a...
An ordinance, I mean, there's ordinance on books now, but they have...
Right, and we've tried, I've tried to get them to...
Vehicles, garbage.
Danny, what do you think?
I think we can. The only issue is going to be is, you start taking somebody's property like that, is what's garbage and what's his treasure?
Exactly.
You know, that's always going to be a problem.
Well, the thing about it is, Tim Duvall went out there. He set a fire about twenty feet long behind his house, and it's shooting about twenty feet up in the air, and I called Tim. Tim come out there and drove down there and he said, what are you doing? He said, well, the city won't take my garbage, so I'm going to burn it. Tim said, no, you're not. He said, this is a mess down here. So we give him an opportunity to bring the garbage up, and he brought so much of it up, and now he refuses to bring the mess of it. Billy, if you ever get a chance, go out there across from my house.
I thought this thing, this thing that they fixed up, it had fines that they were going to have to pay.
Yeah, we'll charge them for what is done and also under the...
His water can be cut off?
Can you live with that?
Yeah. You know, he's got electric, his mother's paying it.
Hundred dollars for each offense.
But the water, they're bringing water in, they're not there half the time.
So he's shooting up.
He stays high most of the time.
Right, well, and it's... Yeah, this is about, you know, to be probably several weeks, month process, you know, but...
This has been going on for, this has been going on for a couple of years.
Yeah, and that was the other thing that David and I brought up last time. Under the current ordinance, we thought about maybe amending it to where it is, it says a misdemeanor for five hundred dollars and changing it to a violation of like a hundred dollars. And then make it daily. Instead of make it criminal, make it civil.
Misdemeanor makes it criminal.
If it's in the ditch, is it on the right way?
Yeah, pretty much, yeah.
We on the right way?
But it's behind his house.
It's behind his house.
No, it'd be on, if it's behind his house in the ditch, it's on somebody else's property.
No, I'm for, I'm for...
So what do you guys think about amending the ordinance just to make it a violation instead of a current misdemeanor? That was the discussion on...
We don't want it a misdemeanor. I think put them in the court system.
Yeah.
We want it to be against the city and not against a, not a civil offense instead of a...
Criminal.
Criminal offense.
The other thing is a misdemeanor, the five hundred dollars would be collected by the county.
That's no good.
Versus a violation collected by the city.
That would almost defeat the program which we're doing. Right.
And if they don't pay the fee?
We still got to do something.
Then you do the lien issue.
It's all over town. And I said, they're working on separate ordinance for structures and... Any other comment on dilapidated properties? Any other comment on dilapidated properties, we'll move on. Y'all may not have noticed it, but the last two city council meetings have been broadcast on YouTube. And we had about twelve hundred viewers at the last council meeting, and the quantity, although that was our initial meeting, our first time doing it, it turned out real well. Bob had to keep it down a little bit the next day because there was like twenty-four minutes slack between the beginning of the council meeting and when he started his camera. So he kept it down a little bit to cut that twenty-four minutes out. And, uh, but Bob don't work for free, and his camera and stuff, he didn't buy for free. But to be fair to people, other people that might be interested in doing, performing the same service, we're going to have to, if we want to continue this, we don't have to continue it. But with YouTube, they can go back to the library a year from now and look back to the February meeting that we're having tonight and look at it. And I know Harold Miller, when I first got elected, he said he was for doing something like this.
Yeah, we've talked about it for years, before I was all for it back home.
Bob said, a plug for him.
That's why the camera's there.
Well, that's right.
And it's because we talked about it before and Joseph put the camera in it.
Bob said, there's a number of services that we could do. We can make public service announcements and stuff, maybe about snow routes or a city hall closing. That a person who's subscribed to the YouTube channel of the city of Litchfield, when there's a broadcast being on, it'll come up on your phone. When Clayton does a Bible study, it comes up on my phone, Clayton Miller Bible study.
Right.
And, uh, but we need to decide, do we want to continue it? If we do, how are we going to decide who it goes to?
So can we not have a link on our webpage to go shirt to it?
Should be able to. Have you been on our webpage?
I have been on the webpage.
I have, but I mean...
I mean, we've, we've had this before. I mean, we've linked.
Well, we've got to decide a mechanism for who's going to do this.
I want to know some cost figures before I make any decisions.
That's right.
I agree.
That's right.
But we want more exposure for the city with our page than we just go to YouTube. I mean, I understand you can go to YouTube and watch it, but you need to sell it, you go to...
We had twelve hundred views over our last council meeting and probably our, I don't know how many, I was going to estimate how many people have been on the city website since our last meeting, but I'm, I would have no basis to base my thought, my decision. Well, let's, let's decide that, because like I said, Bob can't continue to come here. And so talk amongst yourselves, we want to bid it out, we want to put it on the paper that we're looking for somebody to perform this service, what can you do? Surely, quality would have an element of this, and Bob's quality is exceptional, frontwards and backwards, if you look at it. And so I don't know what else to say about that except...
I mean, do we need to ever that?
We're going to have to bid it out.
I mean, you're going to have, I think.
Last time we did...
I mean, Bob pretty well knows right now what he's got invested over each thing.
He does.
Time, equipment.
That's right.
Do you remember the last time you put it out, we got one bid of twenty thousand dollars?
Yeah.
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 And that was just...
I can't remember, was that, that was annual, wasn't it? Was that annual?
Yeah.
Oh, no.
Bob, do you, do you care for me saying about what we're talking about?
I don't care for you to say.
Bob said he's about, he's at about three hundred dollars. He's got himself, he's got his equipment, he's got somebody monitoring and switching back and forth between different scenes and stuff. He's at about three hundred dollars per meeting. And like I said, the quality of it is just like you turn on Dr. Phil and, uh, or Jerry Springer.
If I could say something to Rick, once we get the bugs worked out, too, like when you all went executive session, I didn't expect that, but the public service announcement, like we discussed earlier, I could have, I could have that stuff preloaded and whenever we have to do something like that...
When we're in executive session, he could play, he could play the...
We could go to something that's not just a screening here with Little Lee and our attorney sitting there.
That's right.
That there could be some plugging and stuff going on.
That's right. Now watch you, watch what you're talking about over there.
Yeah.
Stand in the blue line you talk to.
Yeah, so that's, you know, that's something that can be done, but it just takes time to get...
And he would put it on channel two the next day. I'm, I know Bob's quality does excellent work and, uh, let's, we'll decide that by the next meeting, Bob.
Mayor?
Yes, sir.
International soccer teams wear advertisements, so maybe we could get the mayor to wear advertisements to recruit the cost of...
Uh, offset the cost of that, yeah. I could wear a farmer's market, farmer female.
Exactly.
And Tootie could wear his realty company. We give you a minute to stand up and talk.
No campaign shirts.
No campaign shirts. Well, let's move on and payroll software update.
Just want to let everybody know that we've got both of the, the two software orders that we talked about last, last meeting, and I know we had mentioned that we were in question on whether the one thousand fifty-two dollars and fifty cents was going to be still there for annual fee, because she had told me it wasn't, but yes, we still have to pay that annual fee.
You need the action on us?
No, I've done talk to the council members just to make sure that they were good with me going ahead and proceeding with that, because we needed to get the ball rolling on it and they were fine with that. I just want to let everybody know I didn't have it. Have it ordered and just get the minutes updated that the one thousand fifty-two dollars is going to stand.
Let's go for old business in Clayton. No. Kelly?
No, sir.
Billy? Lori?
I do kind of have some old business. Wes brought this to me a long ago before the meeting started. Um, I do not know where it come from. It's a city of Litchfield bid on the brick house on White Pass.
Uh, that comes under new business.
Well, it's kind of old business, because we bid it out before, I mean, we put it out there as surplus property, and we've actually advertised it for bids, so I would think it would fall into the old business still.
Okay. Can I address that then?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Marty Higdon asked if we'd done anything with that property. He said that he had, he wanted to buy the house and move it, and he said that he had turned the bid in to Sheila back, I don't know how long ago it was, whenever it came up before, I don't know. Kelly was, but, and Billy was on the council, I guess, and I don't know.
On February seventeen.
Oh, okay, all right. Anyway, and he wondered what had been done with the bid and why nothing did they ever...
So you got a copy of that?
Been brought up.
Did we advertise the bid?
Yes, we bid, we advertised it.
Have you seen a copy of it?
Sales bids, didn't you give them?
Yes, we asked for, and they were to come here.
He said he handed it to her. But anyway, he came by and dropped it. I told him Wesley was in charge now, and I said, I will bring up tonight and ask if the house has been sold. Are we going to sell it? Are we going to let it sit there?
You know, the Vandals have got a hotel.
Yeah, and...
It's a shame that that house was livable.
And he said he knew that, and I said, well, I, I, I tell you, I don't know. I said, all I can tell you to do is make a bid, give it to whoever, and so he's wanting to know about buying that house and getting it out of the way.
Let's, uh, let's go ahead. If we, if we don't have his bid, it's of no value. If somebody in the house don't have it, somebody in the city hall don't have it, it's of no value. Let's see what that says.
Well, do we want to open this or, I think in one of our training sessions, they said even though we didn't get bids, we would still have to bid it out again and advertise it.
Have to feel more comfortable.
I think we just hold on to this and get another ad put out in the paper is my suggestion.
Right.
Okay, well, let's declare that bid null and void.
Well, it's not open, well, it's not sealed, but...
Okay.
Or we remove it without bidding? Or we have to bid it?
Well, we have to put it out there, we have to advertise it for bid.
We can't just demolish?
Yeah, we could.
But what would it cost to demolish and haul it out?
It is declared surplus.
Don't have any idea? Don't know what you're going to get into when he gets into it. If there's asbestos, if there's, I mean, he's going to turn to us.
If he writes us a check, who cares?
Well, we...
Well, he'd care.
It's bid as is, and it's put in the...
I said, they've torn some of the wiring and stuff out lately. Okay, let's go ahead then. Any other old business?
So you want me to advertise for bids?
If y'all want to advertise for bids?
Yeah, couldn't be a lot more.
A new motion?
Yeah.
Yeah.
I mean, do we need a motion to advertise for bids again?
Yes, sir, let's do it. Let's have a motion.
I make a motion.
Okay, second? Okay, Kelly's second. All in favor? Okay, we'll advertise that house to be bid. What about the other house?
Bids need to be torn down.
Yeah, need to be torn down.
The fire department's been using it for some training, so I mean, I don't know what's really...
I figured, I figured they'd burn it down or something soon.
Until we find out something, we'll leave the other house alone.
Right.
And I talked to Tim Duvall on that, and he said they were still using it, and as soon as they got done with it, he would let us know when they were completely done with it.
Okay.
It's a huge paper to him out there, buying a house.
Yeah. Brian, do you have any old business to talk about, I'm sorry? Danny?
No, sir.
Wes?
Yes, I do, on the streetlights. We've got about upgrading the streetlights around the square and one block in each direction. Right now, we have, I met with the engineer and the mayor did also, from KU, and it looks like, and he just sent me an email just a few minutes ago, giving me the totals, and it looks like right now, we're, we've got fourteen high-pressure sodium lights and then four metal vapor lights, I think is what they're called. I'm not real up to date on what they're, what kind they are, but, uh, we are paying, let's see, a total of two hundred eighty-six dollars and sixteen cents for those eighteen lights per month. Installing eighteen LED lights would cost us forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents more per month to upgrade.
How much more?
Forty-eight dollars and sixty-four cents.
That was brought about when the Methodist church was wanting to cross over from the Methodist church to the well.
Right.
Sheila had put in new LED lights, and you go up there, you see them.
Yes.
They're super nice. So the lights around the square, uh, block south, block east, west, north, that would cost us forty-eight dollars a month more to upgrade those, those lights, and they're substantially better. And also, we talked about the east, East Main, we talked about adding two or three lights down that street, because it's dark.
Yeah, we had talked to him about a kind of an old-time looking light, go about in front of Jack Thomas House, three of those down through there, and the light itself and the post and the cost and everything would be seventy-two dollars and twenty-seven cents a month for three more lights right there, down that corner.
Mm-hmm.
And I've got a picture of what the top of it looks like. You showed it to me a while ago. Top of them looks like that.
There's, there's some grass between the Litchfield Deposit Bank parking lot and the Jack Thomas House, between the sidewalk and the street, and we proposed putting these two down there, and it would accent...
Two or three?
Three.
Give me a price of twenty-four dollars and nine cents per light.
I think we said...
So just depending on two or three.
Whatever, two or three. And like I said, that's dark down the street anyway.
It is.
And it would complement the property, and I said, light up the square each way, and it, for not a lot of money, we can make a lot of improvement there.
Brighten it up.
Brighten it up a lot. Can I hear a motion to do that then?
I'd make a motion.
I second.
All in favor? Thank you. I also talked to Wes and I talked to the council before about putting, I noticed when we travel, what we call them shade structures?
Shade structures.
Shade structures. You got a picture?
I do.
This is a picture in Venice, Florida, where we ride our bikes. If you notice right behind there is a bike pad, and I proposed putting four of these around town, North Main, West Main, out by Walmart, and then really I had in mind Wallace Avenue or South Main. And they look comfortable, it makes the community look good, and they're going to cost us, if we do that, thirty-five hundred dollars apiece, and they're still structures, and...
Is that, that, is that concrete?
That's concrete, benches, uh, completely finished.
Can we install or they're installed?
No, that'd be us installing on...
Thirty-five hundred each?
Uh-huh. And I'm suggesting four.
You mean a property?
Well, we'll have to get consent. Have to get consent.
Have to figure out where you're going to put them first.
Like, feel where you want to put them. And like I said, they look attractive.
And you can put two benches back to back if you wanted to, depending on where they're at, or you could put a picnic table under them, depending on the...
I don't know what to pick them tables for.
So I'd rather have the bench.
I had, I would too. That, that's what they had in Florida, is a picnic table.
And you know, even like on the corner over there on Wallace with the bench and the garbage can already are, I mean, you can do something there.
Right there on that corner, Kelly.
Where's that?
Going into the E town. Give me into college.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, right there on that corner. Because man, Wallace, there's no, no busier sidewalk in town than Wallace Avenue.
Or street.
Yeah, and we walked it this morning, Joyce and I did.
Our speeders.
Yeah, speeders for sure. We're going to work on that, too. Dwight? I can tell that later. Can I get a motion to do that?
I think we ought to find the property first.
Okay, that shouldn't be no problem.
We got plenty of things to do.
But they won't be made overnight, and like I said, if...
Is it the city making them too?
Uh-huh, yeah.
Like we made those one at the ball field.
Yes, we build them in our shop, actually fabricate them there.
Yeah.
Okay.
So it won't, won't be made overnight and...
I just think it looks like something at Ball Field. Ain't much on the metal roof, but I'm sure they make them nicer, but I mean, I just, it looks like something y'all could build.
Yeah.
I mean...
That's what he is going to build.
Yeah, they're going to build.
They're becoming kits, right?
No, no, no. We have to make them from scratch.
You got to make them from scratch.
And you can change the style a little bit, too.
It'll be a little bit different, but it's going to be really close to that. That one's probably a little bit bigger than the ones we're looking at, they're probably ten by ten. And they'll be the color, and you know, the colors like the ones at the firehouse, I